The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. All right. I'd just like to welcome Jonathan Formicella, who is on Town Council and he is the liaison now to the Board of Education and a couple of other things, right? It's health and something else?
Yeah, EMS as well as the Board of Health.
Right. And you're replacing Dennis, who had left the Town Council, so he's the new Dennis. So he'll be here as our liaison. All right, I think we're gonna have a pretty quick meeting this evening, so we're gonna get right into it. Um, ah, let's see. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Christine. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and first up is our Massey board reps.
Hello. So I have a boys' swimming update. They did very well this season, so overall, they won nine of their meets and they only lost two. Joey Nazzardo, who is a sophomore, broke his own 500 free record several times. The team went third overall at SWCs and with several swimmers placing first. The medley relay went all-state and then that same relay attended Opens. So overall, it was a great season for them. So Massey's spring drama this year is James and the Giant Peach. It'll be showing March 29th at 7:30 and March 30th at 1:00 PM and 7:30 PM. Tickets are only $10.
Massey Robotics had a great weekend at Southern New England Championships in Massachusetts. We have three teams advancing to VEX's World Championships that made it to semifinals in the event. In addition, Massey teams won the Create Award, the Think Award, and the Judges Award. Sophomores had a fun time at Ring Dance at the Stone Barn on Friday night. And last Wednesday, last Wednesday night, the Massey PTA had a successful prom fashion show and were able to fundraise money for post-prom.
The dugout projects for both the baseballs and softball teams have been doing fantastic. They look to be almost ready for the season, as funded by Mike Morella, who was here earlier, who was a senior at Massey. And the Color Guard team has had an awesome season this year, as they've placed in all of their competitions and have won the last three, and they've won more than that as well. And they'll be competing in the state competition this weekend.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great job, girls.
Does anybody have any other committee reports? Georgia, I take it you just wait for policy later?
Yeah, we had four policy reviews tonight, so we'll take those four next week.
Okay, perfect.
Or next time.
Anybody have any other? All righty, we will move on to public participation. All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Donna. First up, the board's self-evaluation, there's some good progress there. Seven of you have completed it as of 4:00 PM today. And do we want to pick a due date for that, so we can put it on another agenda?
Yes, because we'll also, do we plan what day we were having our self-evaluation? Or I don't even remember?
We did and I forget.
We could, if you wanted to, we could have it ready for the April 1st meeting if we picked, like, if we could just all complete it by the end of the week, we could have everything ready for that April 1st date if you're gonna...
Okay.
All right, so I'll complete it by the end of the week.
You too.
It won't take you more than five to 10 minutes, that's all.
It was very quick. All right, perfect. We'll put it on that agenda, perfect.
All right, you got it. And the review of the February 2019 fund statement, Gabby?
Sure. So insurance, we're still trending pretty comparable to last year, maybe a little bit higher. We have four claims at stop-loss, which is about where we were last year as well. We've spent a little bit more than last year, however, so it's still pretty dicey this year. I'm kind of looking forward to July 1st when we'll be on the state partnership plan. And I'm not gonna be talking about insurance that much next year, I'm really excited.
What are you gonna do with all your free time now?
Yeah, I just won't be talking about insurance. It doesn't mean I don't have free time. I'll find something else to talk about. Otherwise, in terms of spending, as we said, we put a spending freeze on everything else just to make sure that we can get through the rest of the year, because as Jack knows, I get really nervous around now. You know, we still might have unanticipated emergency repairs, and as you all remember, we did add a couple sections for class size increases and the ASSAs last year that we hadn't really budgeted for. So I still don't sleep great well at night, but we'll get by.
Is that a hard freeze? And when does that go in typically?
So it's a hard freeze in the sense that obviously we still spend money on things like salaries and if it's truly an emergency repair...
Discretionary spending for supplies and things like that?
Yeah, no, can't do that. Stuff like that.
And are we, so, a lot of times, we do put these in place. Are we ahead of where we were last year? We're doing it earlier?
No, we're doing it about the same time. We usually start asking for people to close out POs. What tends to happen is people encumber or they reserve the money by putting in a purchase order, and they may have put it in on like September 1st, and we're like, well, okay, you set aside, and I'm making up numbers now, you set aside $10,000, but you've only spent 9,000, or you've only spent 500. Do you really need the, "Well, you know, we might have to do this."
Sure.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so you can keep 1,000, but if you haven't spent, you know, the majority of your purchase order, let's close it and let's rethink what you really need to do.
Yep, okay.
Because it's probably gonna be needed someplace else. I just never know, we just never know when something's gonna break, something's gonna happen, health insurance, you know, fun things like that, so.
All right, so related to that, the budget update, so we have our Board of Finance presentation on March 28th, 6:00 PM at Town Hall, and that's the Board of Ed Budget Presented to Board of Finance. And we've, Gabby's been putting together some other numbers. Since the budget adoption, we've had some additional retirements, so we have 77,000 of savings there. We've also realized about $5,000 in savings from the dental insurance, the change in that plan from, even though it's the same exact benefits, the change from it being with Cigna to Cigna with state partnership, there's a little bit of savings. And those will go, those savings will go towards the 300,000 deficit we have right now in the health insurance account for next year. And then the other thing that Gabby's working on is the year-end funds with the freeze, what we're hoping to do is consolidate all that money together to be able to take care of the balance of that 300, so that we've got everything balanced as we go into the next fiscal year. So we're looking at, what, 218,000 is what we're hoping to realize by the end of the year. That's what we're shooting for. That's why Gabby's losing sleep, but that's what we're seeking to pull together as we close out the year and go into the next. In terms of state legislation, I had the chance to talk with JP today, as well as get some information, some of the superintendent groups last week. And just so you know, Senator Looney's bills about the regionalization plans that use the probate districts, those really don't seem to be having any traction, that most likely those are going to go away. The Governor's Bill 874 seems to be the one that everybody is saying will move forward. It will change over time. That one doesn't force regionalization. It does have things in it like back-office efficiencies and the like. It does incentivize finding some efficiencies, but it doesn't say that, you know, everybody, that a town like Monroe would have to regionalize with others. So that's a positive change. And then Jerry and I will be going up to Capitol Hill on Wednesday for the Caves Day on the Hill, and we'll find out more when we're up there as well, and we'll report back to all of you as things change over time.
Jack, can I ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Quick question, there was a bill proposed that would give first elected mayor's authority to appoint Board of Ed chairs. Does that seem to be going anywhere?
I don't know about that one. There've been so many new bills coming in.
There's some crazy ones, like Looney had also done another one with regard to districts that had 15,000 students or less. And what did I tell you that one was of? Oh, that one was about where the Board of Ed would be its own separate entity from their town, and that the Board of Ed would have, there would be no more referendums, and the Board of Ed would just decide on a budget, and then the Board of Ed would have the authority to send out tax bills to people, and we'd have to collect the taxes for the Board of Education on its own. Like, there's some really...
Your jobs wouldn't be stressful at all.
Yeah. There are some really crazy bills that just keep coming up from this Representative Looney out of New Haven that are, I don't know what's going on. It's a little crazy up there.
I'll check with JP on that.
Yeah.
Obviously, we retain as much autonomy as possible.
Yeah, and we'll ask when we're up there, too. One of the things I learned when I testified up there two weeks ago is there's these bills that they refer to as concept bills, to float an idea. They really don't think it's gonna go anywhere. I mean, that one sounds to me like it's in that category, but...
I would say, yeah.
Yeah, we'll find out when we're up there.
There's just so many crazy, like I said, crazy things up there, that they're just introducing, like, ramming these crazy things up all the time, so I don't know what's gonna happen.
A few of the towns around us, their Board of Eds have voted to include the teacher retirement pay for next year, for whatever their town will be.
Yeah.
Have we considered any of this? Do we know where this is going?
Well, we have a sense. I, we had a meeting, Donna and I, with Mike Manchester from Board of Finance, and just prior to that meeting, just it was dumb luck, all the superintendents chimed in with a list of what every town is doing. So I brought, I consolidated all that data, I brought it to the meeting. A majority, a narrow majority are doing nothing. Then, after that, it varies. Some towns have decided to split it between the two, some towns have taken it completely on their own, you know, but again, 50% are not doing anything. I think my suggestion would be, with so much changing, it's way early to make a call. I think about what happened two years ago. We went through all these gyrations and all this craziness. We won't know where we're at until legislative season is done.
Would we know what 25% of our cut would be?
Yeah, so, we're looking at 300 grand.
We have the numbers, they gave us the numbers.
Oh, good.
So they gave us the numbers on what it would, what our share of the pension plan would be, and it was in the neighborhood of like 320-something thousand dollars. And I, and from our meeting, and Gabby was there, and, you know, Ken was there, Mike was like, "We're not doing anything with that." He doesn't think that that's gonna happen, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
And I understand, and I understand, I just was...
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, the total nut over the next two years is they've projected 300 and change for TRB, 700 grand cuts to ECS, so roughly a million for next year, a million the year following. That's what's projected. But again, what comes out the other end of the season, we'll see.
And we'll find out more on Wednesday, like you said, that's true.
Right.
Yeah. Next, insurance, that's moving along. UPCU has its ratification, happens to be the 28th for all four groups, so everything will be done on that date. Also, Joe's done a great job scheduling insurance sessions with retiree groups as well as central office. He continues to provide these informational sessions with employees, so we can start to gear up for open enrollment and get everybody ready for the new plan.
It's a shame Joe isn't here. Can I cut you off? I mean, what a great job he did in organizing that. A lot of positive thought on that. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, no, it was really well done, and we had our BOE/retiree rep there as well.
Yeah, which was really cool. Yeah, I know.
Also known as Jerry. Celebration of Reading went really well, and thank you to everyone that volunteered, and a special thank you to our parent council reps, Candace Boyle and Tanya Jean Gills, for overseeing this year's Celebration of Reading. AYSO was super helpful with providing additional funds for purchasing books from Linda Storytime, and we had, all 64 of our elementary classrooms had a story read to them from parents, community members, and guest staff members, so thank you to everybody. It's always a great day. The Monroe Schools of Distinction, I have a little more about this in the Next Generation results presentation that will follow my report here. We're very fortunate that we have two schools of distinction this year. We have Fawn Hollow Elementary School and Monroe Elementary School, and this really is a big deal. And I have some context to share how big a deal this is, but it really, it's exciting. So congratulations. Tomorrow morning, I'm at Fawn Hollow's faculty meeting, where I'm gonna show what I'll share with you in just a moment, and then I think it's next week I'm at Monroe Elementary for the same. So a little more to follow on that.
That's great, congratulations.
Wonderful thing, yeah. It's great news. And our regional collaboration work continues to move forward. We are working with Ed Advance to conduct the study of what needs district has in terms of outplacements for special education, so they can take a look at trends across all districts, in terms of what population would be easiest, it's a common population amongst the districts, to start there, and then also take a look at available spaces in the area. And that continues to work forward, so that's exciting. I'm optimistic that that has a chance to come forward with something very real in the next year to two years, so we continue to persist in that area.
What areas would that cover? Sorry, sorry.
It would be, I'm glad you asked, because I did get a phone call from a parent after a presentation not too long ago, saying, "I'm concerned that my child's special education services at Fawn Hollow would stop and they'd be somewhere else." I said, "No, no, no, please understand, this is for outplacements. This is, outplacements are those instances when our services in our schools can't address the needs of a child. It's a very, very small population of student, students that we have, and in all districts, this is something that occurs, but the cost of that is very high. And we don't have controls over those costs, because it's a program provided by an outside agency." So by our collaborating with other districts, we can be in control of that programming in those outplacement instances, and then we can also be in control of the costs related to that programming.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. What towns are you working with? Currently, we're working very closely with Eastern Reading and Newtown, but it's expanded. Now, the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Group, they're all interested in being involved in some way, shape, or form. So the list that I saw this morning was probably about 10 districts.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so there's a lot of interest now.
They have a couple sites in the area.
Very well could be a couple sites, which would be very advantageous. We could have different focuses in different sites, or potentially one site with multiple focuses, which would allow us to, you know, would have some benefits, too, sharing a staff a little more, could be more cost-effective still.
Great.
All right.
That's good news.
Yeah, it keeps moving forward. Any questions on my report at all? All right, thank you. I have a presentation, and this one, I do have a couple slides for that.
All righty.
Go figure, right?
Just a couple.
Just a couple. And Bob, there's some audio on the second one, too, just so you know. So this is our Next Generation Accountability Report 2017-18. It takes a while for all of this to get to us from the state, that's why it's from 17-18. And this is a very quick, two-minute overview of Next Generation Accountability. I thought this was very well done, so I wanted to share it with you to give you some background and context about how this scoring works.
Welcome to this introduction of Connecticut's Next Generation Accountability System. We did a good picture of a student's educational accomplishments. We need to look at more than just a single test score. The same is true if we wanna know how well a school or district is doing. Therefore, when it comes to evaluating schools and districts, Connecticut uses a broader and more holistic approach called the Next Generation Accountability System. This system incorporates up to 12 key indicators. These indicators focus not just on academic achievement on a test, they also focus on academic growth, chronic absenteeism, college and career readiness, high school graduation, post-secondary entrance, physical fitness, and participation in the arts. Even when it comes to test scores, the Next Generation Accountability System looks at things a little differently. For students in grades four through eight, the system rewards academic growth more than achievement. This means that schools with historically lower achieving students can also do well in the system, if they help their students grow academically. For students in grades 11 and 12, because different students show their abilities in different ways, the system rewards schools when students meet benchmark scores on any exam, not just the SAT, but also the ACT, Advanced Placement, or International Baccalaureate Districts and schools are using this system to identify areas that may need improvement. The state uses the system to identify districts and schools that are doing well, and those that may need resources and support. For additional information about the Next Generation Accountability System, please visit the EdSite Data Portal. Thank you.
So just a few things to highlight. With the Next Generation Accountability System, it's an overarching look at our schools. The most important information that we have about our individual students is the individual data at the school level, and that's really the part we dig into. The SBAQ data is helpful, SAT data is helpful, but that isn't as helpful as using that data along with our own internal data sets, where we're looking at reading results, where we're looking at math results. You put that together, and we really know each individual student really well. What this is more about is overarching. You pull all these indicators together, and what's it saying about a school? What's it saying about a district? So that's a theme that you'll hear as we get into the next couple slides. So here's how everything goes together. There's a lot of pieces here. So there's the 12 indicators that he was referring to just a moment ago, and the distribution of these 12 indicators varies depending on the age range. So in the elementary level, 27% is academic achievement. This is coming from the SBAQ results. 53% is growth, also coming from SBAQ, but the difference is, they're looking at how much a student grows year to year. This is a really big deal for us. It's really the best measure of instruction. You can have students performing at a very high level, year after year after year, doesn't necessarily mean that they've grown a lot. Versus, this indicator shows how all students have progressed over time. They might start out at a high level, but end at an even higher level. So at the elementary level, this is a big deal, and rightfully, it's the largest percentage of how they score a school. 13% is chronic absenteeism, and this is straight out of state statute. If a student is labeled chronically absent, then that would be included within that 13%. And then lastly, at the elementary level, the 7% is, let's see here, am I getting that right?
Physical, physical fitness?
Ah, thank you. I knew it wasn't graduation. Yeah, so it's physical fitness. There's three reds here, so physical fitness, and this is straight off of the Connecticut Physical Fitness Exam. Middle school, you can see the makeup is similar, it shifts a little bit, a little less growth, and there is another piece added here, this 6%, and that is on track for graduation. And what they start to look at is, this is the first time students are taking a class towards high school, that's world language. So we start to look at, are they really on track to be able to graduate over time? And then lastly, you can see the high school here changes quite a bit. Growth has gone away, and it's more about academic achievement. And that's the reason why, is this is the last stop in their journey, K-12. So it's more about looking at how students have performed in the past to make a decision about entrance into college. Whereas in elementary and middle, it's preparing them for the future, preparing them to be successful at the high school level, so the growth becomes less important. And then, a lot of other indicators here, all related to graduation, are students graduating on time, are they taking the right kind of coursework, those kinds of things. So when you see these numbers, these overarching numbers, they mean different things at different levels. So as we looked at the numbers and the outcomes, these are the areas for growth and success that we've identified in our first look at this data. Arts access is our lowest spot. Last year, we were at 41.7%. It's up this year at 49.9. You'll see recommendations related to these in a minute. Physical fitness is regarding the physical fitness rate off of the Connecticut Fitness Test, and that's also up from last year. Last year, 40.3%, that's up 74.8%, so that's coming along. Math growth for our high-need students, that means students with an IP, with a special ed program in place, that's slightly down, 54% this year, whereas the last time we were tested was 55.6. EL growth for high-need students, this is English Language Arts, 58%, up a little bit from the previous instance of 56.3%. The other thing that we did with our administrative group is, we went through the data and we identified key areas that we wanna focus on for each building, and regarding all students as well as high-need students. We broke that out into a grid. Again, as we discussed this as an administrative team, this is not as important as when we dig down into the SBAQ results. This doesn't give us a lot of finite detail, but it does give us some good information that we don't get in other places. This is one of the few places where arts access is measured. This is one of the few places where PE results are measured. So those are some things that are helpful. The other thing we wanna look at, too, is when we look at ELA or math performance, does it align with the things that we're focused on within the SBAQ work that we've done, and the SAT work that we've done? So it either affirms or challenges things that we've already looked at in those areas. So what are some actions for areas of growth? In arts access, maintaining programming is important. You know, one of the things we've talked about over time is, we get into budget season, and we get into tough budgetary times, and what goes? Fifth grade band goes out. And Monroe, you go back in time, our middle school band director was the high school band director. At Massey High School, it was a big, healthy band program of 140 kids, and the program is no longer that. And the reason why it's not that is, when you cut fifth grade band, six years later, you don't have a high school band. That's the way it works. Now, we've had the good fortune of those things coming back into place, and the numbers coming up will get better over time, but those kinds of cuts will hamper this access in the future. So it's something I just think we should be mindful about moving forward. Physical fitness, we're just looking at ways to increase participation and performance. My wife is a PE teacher. The hardest part of being a PE teacher is people, students have to go and shower and get dirty and change, and that's not a real popular thing at the high school level. Is that a fair statement, girls, that coming out to gym is probably not the most comfortable thing, dressing the hair and everything else? Yeah, it's a hard thing, and participation rate in PE is challenging. You don't have that challenge in other courses, you just don't. But you have injuries and those kinds of things that hamper participation, so it's a challenge. And one that we're working on, the PE staff is dedicated to addressing that and making that better over time, as well as finding ways to make performance engaging for our kids. Doing the timed mile is not the most fun thing in the world. Kids don't necessarily come to school thinking, "Oh, yes, I have to go out on the track." And for the kids that are in athletics, the other thing that happens is, they don't necessarily wanna run a timed mile, when that same afternoon, they're gonna be out on the athletic field running lots and lots of miles. And again, not necessarily things that people think about in these tests, but these are the realities of dealing with students, and these are things we have to think about, and we're thinking creatively about, okay, are there other ways we can do the timed mile where students get some choice, where, yeah, it's not before you go out on the soccer field that day, so that it doesn't decrease from your performance when you get into the match? Those kinds of things. Math growth, high needs, one of the things that we've done is, we've, our data set that we have at the elementary level, we've made sure that the data that's there flows into the middle school level and flows into the kids' time that we've been talking about. Those are some new things. Again, it just enhances what we know about students individually, which will enhance what we do for students individually with our instruction. So we're hoping that that's gonna net some positive results for us moving forward. In ELA growth, high needs, we're seeing some good things there. You know, our workshop model's working out really well. Newtown just came in last week at Fawn Hollow to see some classrooms. Two of my former colleagues are administrators in Newtown, Laurie Rodriguez, the superintendent there, and Chris Moretti, who's the principal at Holly Elementary, and glowing emails, glowing emails about the work that's going on there, how impressed they are with the quality of the work that's going on within our classrooms. And that's the result of our staying the course and staying dedicated, five years of hard work, right, Becky?
Oh, really? And in meeting with them, we just felt so fortunate that Jack and the board have supported us with TC all these years, because it has made a huge difference.
And related to that, we've seen really good results in that regard with our ELA results, and you'll see a little more about that related to the school of distinction in a moment. So one of the things we're doing is, we've just started, well, we've been experimenting with this for a little bit, we're gonna expand on this a little more. We're looking at creating our own math workshop. There's nobody else doing this right now. There's an author who started to write about this a little bit, so we're gonna start to study it on our own, because it's just good instruction. So we're hoping to take the successes here and see them realized here as well. So that's another place we're looking to go.
Jack, what do you think's going on with math?
If you look at the math results, it's not, you know, it's not unique to us. I mean, math scores are tough for everybody. Math scores at middle school level are really tough, but I do think part of the reason... tough, but I do think part of the reason why is this, I think when you look at Teachers' College, they are the definitive source in the, in the whole world, and teaching ELA, we are really lucky to be close to New York City, Sheila got a call directly from Lucy Cawkins last week, Lucy Cawkins is the head honcho of the whole Teachers' College Workshop, so we're located next to the best stuff, the best instruction there is. In math, as a discipline, there's no definitive source as strong as Teachers' College, it doesn't exist, there's more scatter in the content area around how best to provide instruction, we're hoping we're gonna find a way to do that better through, through this, so that's, that's my, my thesis on the whole thing. So here are successes, post-secondary entrance, we met the indicator by a hundred percent, six-year graduation for high need students, ninety-four percent is, it's a very good number, four-year graduation, all students a hundred percent, on-track high school, a hundred percent, preparation for, this is college career-ready, percent taking courses, and what they look for is the sophomore year, they have to take five full credits, is the indicator, so a hundred percent with that, chronic absenteeism, we're looking very good there, ninety-nine point nine percent, math performance index, we met, ninety-seven point eight percent of our students met that benchmark set by the state, ELA, a hundred percent met, and two schools of distinction, which I'm gonna share more about that, right?
Hey, Jack, what, what, yeah, thank you.
You got it.
What number makes up chronic absenteeism?
The state has criteria for students that are chronically absent, there are two tiers here, and I'm gonna look to my principal colleagues to make sure I'm getting all the pieces, there's chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism-
Ten percent a year.
-ten percent a year total, and then there's true-
About eighteen days.
I'm sorry, say it again.
About eighteen days, I don't know, maybe two.
Gotcha.
It would be a little bit more than just two days, but if you'd be considered chronically absent by the state, it would be put on that list.
And then you'd be-
Any absence at all.
Thank you.
Right.
Excused or unexcused?
Excused or unexcused, yeah, and we do have some parents who are not really happy about the letter that goes out at ten percent, because if you remember, maybe there's even some here, I won't say.
Doing something wrong?
No, no, no. But the ten percent can occur at any point, and I've talked to a couple of parents about this, you know, keep in mind, if your child, there's gonna be times when students are out for protracted illness, that's okay, it's gonna happen, we have to notify parents that this now rises to the level of chronically absent, so let's take the beginning, first month of the year, eighteen percent of the first thirty days, you know, or I'm sorry, ten percent of the first thirty days is three days, so you could end up rising to that threshold in the first month just by being absent more than three days in the first month, it's okay, the thing, the reason why these letters are going out is to make people aware, because we don't wanna see that letter going out two months, three months, four months, two years, three years, four years, five years, because that has a major impact on the child's learning over time.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thanks for that, and then there's another level beyond chronic absenteeism, which is truancy, correct? Do you remember what the criteria is on that?
Or, or unexcused absence, it's in a month and ten in a year.
So it's like the old standard, that didn't change? Okay, gotcha. So that, the criteria there is the unexcused. Any other questions on this? So, School of Distinction, I wanna give you some context, so in the year 2012, PISA did this assessment, now you've all heard of PISA, it's not the leaning tower, PISA is the, uh, let's see, there it is, right up there, Program for International Student Assessment, this is the assessment that you hear on the news all the time, and they might not say it's PISA, but when they say, "United States students are underperforming forty other countries' math," this is the study it's coming from. So in 2012, the state of Connecticut and the state of Massachusetts paid to be a part of this, the PISA study as countries, there's subsequent assessments, Connecticut chipped out for obvious reasons later on, so this is the last time they did it, but Connecticut and Massachusetts in 2012 were listed as individual countries along with all the other countries in the world, so when it was last done for reading, there were only four countries that outperformed the state of Connecticut in reading, and those countries are Shanghai, China, Hong Kong, China, Singapore, and Japan, all the others were either statistically equal or lesser performing, so roughly, if Connecticut was a country in 2012, we were roughly seven, top seven to ten percent globally for reading instruction, so I set that as a backdrop, because it'd be important to understand how big a deal it is to get a School of Distinction in the state of Connecticut. Nationally, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, that's what NEAT stands for, it's also referred to as the Nation's Report Card, this is the definitive assessment, they go around and they randomly pick schools in the nation to take these assessments, Monroe gets picked very frequently as one of the random sites, and then they grade all the states in the union on their performance, Connecticut, when you look at us, you'll always see us in the top end, especially as you get into middle school and high school, but holds true at the elementary level here too, we're looking specifically in this one, fourth grade reading is what this is for, and in this instance, we rank fifth out of fifty states, top ten percent, people always ask, what is this DU Dia?, that's the Department of Defense, the schools that they have across the globe for children of military families, very, very excellent schools, but as you can see, top ten percent here, so globally, top ten percent, nationally, top ten percent, so for our two schools, for Fawn Hollow and for Monroe L, they're in the top ten percent in the state Connecticut, state of Connecticut, so if you think about this, they're in the top ten percent of the top ten percent, so nationally and globally, they're amongst the top one percent of all schools available to children in the nation and in the world, it's a big deal, the, the great thing about this, three out of three elementary schools now, they have School of Distinction status, Massey High School has School of Distinction status as well as Blue Ribbon status, we will get Jackie Hollow there, they're not there yet, we will get there, so, you know, little by little, we've got four out of five, and we will ultimately have five out of five, so it's really, it's, it's just a tremendous honor and it's a credit to the wonderful work that goes on with our administrative team, our staff and our students, we're very fortunate here, I was going to try to find some data about how many districts have four out of five School of Distinction, it's gonna take some sleuthing really to dig through all the data and figure that out, but that's one of the things I wanna try to figure out is, you know, how, how many other places really have that high a percentage of schools, that schools of distinction, I think it's gonna be pretty small, so-
Might be easier just to get Jackie Hollow there.
Yeah, well, we're gonna do that too, yeah, we're gonna do that too. So that's what I have for you, any questions at all?
Great.
No, just good news, yep, keep up the good work.
Yeah, great job. All right.
Congrats to all the administrators, those that are here and those that aren't.
Thank you, I'll make sure to convey that to everybody, thank you.
All right, we will move on to old business, and we have three policies that are up for a second view, review, excuse me, and vote anticipated, we have policy fifty-one forty-five point one twenty-four, breathalyzers, fifty-one forty-one point five, suicide prevention, and sixty-one forty-two point one oh one, student wellness policy, do I have a motion to approve those three policies as presented? Thank you, Jerry, second David, discussion with any of them? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes, we have no new business, so if anybody, unless anybody has anything else, we can move on to adjournment, all right, so I have a motion to adjourn, Jerry and David, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes, we are all set.
Thank you.